Yeah. Yeah, he hit me up earlier today. According. He's reporting whenever you're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Willow Springs. This is our board meeting. This is January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is seven oh one. I'm speaking in public. I want to start Charles to make a call.
Trustee R.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Micah.
Here.
Hash.
Here.
Moon.
Here.
Car.
Here.
President Niedermeyer.
Here. And that completes the role. We have a forum, but I'll be right back. Gladly, yes, to the better of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, one vision under that individual liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome again, everybody. Thank you for being here. We're on the floor. I'm just getting back in the house. We will jump right into our business first of that previous minute. You know, two minutes in our board act, both for November fifteenth. First, for those of the public hearing, I'm going to do much again. What should we do?
I think the motion, Kennedy.
What should I try to do?
Second, it might come.
Second, my defense, Micah. Okay, now, if you notice, passion will.
Trustee R.
I.
Kennedy.
I.
Micah.
I.
Hash.
I.
Moon. Car.
All eyes on those minutes are first. The second seven minutes are from that same day, December fifteenth. Those are the meeting minutes for that day. I have motion to approve those. Hi, trustee Moon.
Oh, that's good.
Hi. Trustee Pash, with government.
Trustee R.
I.
Kennedy.
I.
Micah.
I.
Hash.
I.
Moon. Car.
All eyes on those minutes. Thank you, Chris Charles. We'll move on to village administrator or administrator.
Thank you, mayor. So I wanted to give the board an update on some interesting things that have been happening here. Over the last couple of weeks, LT High School has decided to sell a large parcel of land that they've held for about sixty years or so. Uh, the land is located along Willow Springs Road from German Church to Seventy-Ninth Street. It's a wooded undeveloped area, arguably probably the largest undeveloped parcel in the entire township. So back in December, they decided that they would entertain the idea of putting it up for sale. That idea escalated pretty quickly, and by the end of December, they had put it out to a public bid. That bid opening was actually held yesterday. So I attended that meeting, the one with the mayor, yesterday at LT's North Campus. And just a little update on what happened there. So there was two, uh, two bidders that were, that were there. They both submitted bids. One of the bidders was below the threshold of what LT was asking as a minimum bid. One of them was, uh, met that requirement. So, um, with that, what that means is that LT is going to present that proposal, that, that bid, uh, presuming that it, once they go through it with a fine food cone, that it actually meets all their requirements. They're going to present that to their board, uh, for possible action on, on accepting that proposal. So what that then means for us here at Willow Springs is, is kind of unique. Prior to that meeting, we reached out to, uh, the LT officials and asked for a meeting. So we understood what they were doing, what their intentions were, and like that. They denied that meeting. Um, there was other government bodies that were interested in meeting as well, which would have been, uh, elementary district and the, uh, park district. Both would be, uh, excuse me, affected by this sale. So LT declined to meet. They said, ah, there's nothing to discuss at this time. So fast forward to the bid opening. Here we are. So, uh, what I've done now that there's been a bid opening is I reached out to the high bidder and requested a meeting. So I'm hopefully going to meet with them within the next, uh, two weeks to see what their thoughts are, what their proposal may be, what they're going to bring forward, and what their intentions of plans. But currently, so that everybody knows, that land is under part of a ordinance that was approved in July of two thousand and seven, which is a planned development agreement that the, uh, village board approved at that time. It's pretty detailed. It spells out uses that the land can be used for and uses that it cannot be used for. It gets in depth as far as, uh, land density, as far as landscaping, what will be approved, what wouldn't, lighting, all types of things are covered. But here's the important things that are covered. Approved uses and not approved uses, as it says. Some of the approved uses for that land will be residential, single-family housing, senior residential living, or retail B-one shopping district. Those are what it's, uh, designed for and what it's currently zoned as. Prohibited uses are also just as important. So the current prohibited uses on that land are automotive fueling and repair stations, any auto dealerships, mini warehouses and storage facilities, or industrial warehouses. All of that is prohibited use on that land. So, like I said, I'm going to hopefully meet with the, uh, the high bidder in the next week or two, get an idea of what they're looking at doing. Make sure that they understand that there's a planned development because there was, I don't really know if there was any due diligence done prior to their bid. So, uh, we're going to go over that with them and see if they still have an interest. LT in their bid packet did allow a significant amount of time for the bidder to get out of the deal. If at any point it doesn't look like it's going to be viable. So I think after our conversation, we'll have a little more, uh, feedback, maybe a little more to share with everybody on what their thoughts are, things like that. So I know it's kind of, it's been a big topic. Uh, it's going to probably continue to be, but it is updated as we, as we. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, administrative委員. Um, I had a back home when he has done that before, and I assume that the reason we have a big conference tonight is just on this topic. So we do have public comment at the end of the meeting. However, if I can make some now, I think, uh, if anybody had public comment on this issue, we would invite that now. We also have a lot of comments at the end. We'd want to speak to this issue, but we're not. We invite anybody making public comment on this for. Is there anybody wishing to speak? If you are wishing to speak, I'm sorry, please just step up to the podium. We'll follow up with the whole, uh, public having the rules for, uh, this three minutes. This issue. Please step to the podium and say your name.
I, I know what you're referring to. And to be honest, I haven't looked into what happened with the village management previously. It was before I became the village attorney. Uh, I would be happy to look into it and try and ensure that it's, uh, can happen again. And I certainly will reach out to you, but if you give me the opportunity to review, then I will get back to you. There could, there should be. Obviously, in our system, anybody can request anything. Somebody coming to the village and requests a zoning for anything, nothing for it. It's that certainly a landlord will request to be disconnected from the village, but there has to be certain issues that need to be found for that to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sprinkle. Anybody else wishing to speak on this? The vacation.
I think Murray was looking for a check statement. Um. She probably was. Yeah.
This successful bidder on that yesterday was Bridge.
Yeah, Bridge, Bridge Industrial was the high bidder.
I'm not familiar with that project. I'm sorry.
These are named at all.
Which company, sir?
The high bidder.
Again, we just learned all of this yesterday at the venue opening, so I'm certain all of that.
The board ultimately is going to have to, if it's only four, you're going to go to crap.
Well, actually, the process will first have to happen in LT at their next meeting. I'm assuming it will be at our next meeting, um, would consider whether or not to accept the bid. And then at that point, if the bid was accepted, any potential purchaser there would then have to go through any zoning permitting process, and anyone would have been going to confront that.
So who is that? See, well, this, I don't want to say that they don't care about Willow Springs. They have a much wider agenda here. And it may not really care what the developer side is with there. The issue is my question in that the developer ultimately have to get approval. Who did go to Willow Springs and well, then it's only issue, correct?
That is correct.
And your father, they actually, chairs are going, who is Eric?
My father is the chair. He's been appointed there for, for everybody there.
I have a question. Brian, did you say that you reached out to find the fountain high school, and they never called you, and it wouldn't be there?
So there was, there was a request prior to the bid opening, yes, for the village of Willow Springs, plus Dale Park District, and plus Dale Elementary, uh, to sit down with LTs to understand what they were trying to do, and LT defined that.
Because before they did that, you would preach their board, they would come and ask you on the lane, or to on the lane, maybe. You didn't think come to them and say, what's our plan, and to your, what are we doing?
Yeah, I don't know what their thought process was, but that did not take place.
True.
Anyone else wanting to make a comment on the board? Thank you again. Please step forward, David.
Hey, this is going, depending on how we're handling the background of the property. Wondering what, uh, the purchaser would aim to do in order to pre-zone that property, and whether they're intended to do so. Different man in foster, is their name? And is currently zoned for that in Oakdale. What do they have to prove in order to get that rezoned?
They would have to go through as any zoning process of planning zoning hearing. Um, there will be an opportunity to hear from the president at that point, and they would go. Different owners, kind of flowing, and then be brought in. And that's the tip of the iceberg. Any other questions, discussion, knowledge for the board?
Um, my name is Brett White. First off, I want to congratulate you guys for actually responding back and forth while people talk, unlike some people. Secondly, LT. With a lot of things that you've dealt with. People with Ryan, that's the pattern. So I don't know where, where it falls in between, but, um, that itself is a concern. I know that there's a, um, very difficult time for will strength to work. For various reasons, unfortunately. But what's happening is the community has gone across there. And what LT just did, as I mentioned in their January ninth meeting, is totally irresponsible to the community and to every tax nearby involved. Who do you call to spring? So I, I provided Ryan a letter with my presentation. That's where I stand at. And, uh, I think that wherever you can keep the community involved and to identify the things that you've learned and are considering prior to the monthly board meetings, that would help a lot to keep the trust.
Yeah.
I have a chance to feel, and probably a lot of people don't know, where I was on the party, part of these, this, 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 the volunteer. Anyway, I was in the twelve years, and one of the things that actually, uh, was very good was the science of art history. That man goes all the way back to the school, the west. However, in the middle of there, you will see Tom Raymond, Tom Raymond was punged by the parties. So I don't worry about. Anyway, it would ask, or whatever we could have given us more information in the school. Again, please, if we could, yeah, we want to have a issue with the law.
Great.
Folks, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, uh, address the issue of the zoning. And I want everybody to understand, back in two thousand and seven, the village had that time zone problem. There are permitted uses and there are prohibited uses, which, uh, Mr. Grace went over. And with that in mind, anything that's going to be done in this time period has to comply with that zoning. So if somebody were to come in and say, we want to do something differently, they would act both way, re-zoning procedure, which would require an application before the planning permission zoning board, which would require a public hearing, public notices to all the residents. Everybody would be given an opportunity to come in and voice their opinion. And at that time, the planning permission zoning board would make a recommendation to the village board. And depending on that recommendation would appear before the village board. And this board would have to make a determination on whether or not it's in the best interest of the village and its residents to proceed with the zoning. So keep in mind, back in two thousand and seven, there were zoning laws in place, and that's what they have to comply with. If they're going to request a variance to those requirements, if they're going to request a special use, they're going to have to come before the planning permission zoning board. Additionally, I, I want to point out that not only do you have the zoning in place, but you have all the other village codes in place that have to be complying. So when you talk about residential, you have square footage, uh, you have rain in requirements, all those are going to have to be met in the village code, and they turn and stand. So it's not a village property that's sitting out there and they can put in whatever they want. They will have to comply with the village codes if they are.
Thank you, attorney, for adding that, and for our high one. Okay, so is there anybody else I invited to step forward on this particular issue?
Um. That being said, the rumor is on the water, was the minimum bid was fifty-five million dollars. Why would Grace Development, the largest industrial office or, uh, commercial warehouse company buy land like that? They're not going to put out, they're not going to retire this. They're not going to put, we're going. Is that the amount of this board willing to just listen to the resident and not approve a zoning change for that?
We will absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this issue? Okay. Thank you, then. I will go on now to, um, our meeting as planned, and that will be the village board's report.
Okay, I'm going to talk about some fun stuff. Um, we're going to have a couple of events this month. Uh, Friday, January twentieth, we're going to be showing a free movie, Rudy, at the community center at seven o'clock. Please come out and join us. It should be fun, free movie night. The next event we're going to have, this is my favorite, we're going to have Bingo. That's going to be Saturday, January twenty-eighth, from seven PM to ten. Um, you could buy a book of ten games for ten dollars, and special games are five dollars. We're going to have some great prizes for all the winners. So please come out and join us. It will be fun. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Of course, I'm official, so.
I'm still completing final reference checks on the proposed contractors for the project. The process has taken a little bit longer due to the budget of it, but I will have a summary recommendation.
Thank you, Attorney General. Village Attorney.
I'm just only report the CD.
Very good. Fellow pleasure, and then?
Uh, no report received.
Okay, thank you. On reports at standing committee, by the administration committee, trustee R.
Thank you, ma'am. For the, the light and big motion to approve by the seventy-eight, one, four hundred and twenty-two, dash zero, dash twenty-four, dated December twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Payroll and funding expenses totally two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
Yeah, the motion by trustee R, very good.
I'll make that motion, Micah.
Hi, trustee Micah, any discussion? Okay, let's call the vote.
Trustee R.
I.
Kennedy.
I.
Micah.
I.
Hash.
I.
Moon. Car.
All eyes on those, for those more.
Um, next, I would like to make a motion to approve by the seventy-two, one, twenty-two, zero, dash four-one, dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Payroll and funding expenses totally two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents.
We have the motion by trustee R. For a second. Hi, trustee Pash, with passion on those words. There being none, let's call the vote.
Trustee R.
I.
Kennedy.
I.
Micah.
I.
Hash.
I.
Moon. Car.
Uh, uh, those are.
Thank you, whose member?
Thanks, trustee R. On to public safety committee, trustee Kennedy.
Thank you. Um, just have to report that Chief Sam Monarch, who drives the department, will be retiring. And, uh, his new replacement will be Pat Brennan. So that's going to be taking place soon. And then I think Chief has a couple of things to add there.
Thank you, trustee. Just, uh, three quick items. Um, all good news, like you, Lori.
Uh, yeah.
The first one is that the, uh, you're deprived of officer who worked for us to be hired and decided. Once the scientific system is, is back, back into the, the DA, they were able to, uh, expedite this investigation. You know? We must, like, that. So that's good. We're also interviewing to fill a void, um, you know, for sure. And. Interview.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, trustee Kennedy. Municipal building ground committee, trustee Michael.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to report, and if you have everybody bring your kids, come out to the family night, movie night on January twentieth, looking forward to seeing everything. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, trustee Michael. Public works, please, that's enough.
Thank you, Madam President. I did not have an official report, but thanks for a lot of what I've been saying here tonight. I got down to some things about the last building we had, and I wanted to reassure the residents that we were ready for a fourteen-inch snowball and everything. So, uh, the whole day was before we spent salt prying olive trees, then dropping salt. But then the band started in the middle of the night, and these guys brought a two-degged grave, trying to fight the fifty mile an hour wind, and the light blowing was low. So I would like to thank public work and, uh, police department, because I was briefed about twenty-four hours a day, by supervising from public works and the police department. So the board would like to thank, uh, police, men and women, and, uh, public work. Uh, indeed, that's all I have. But on the end of this, I would just like to say, thanks for filling the room and assisting me. All this up here for the lifetime, because everybody's in time. And I would just like to announce, because it was a public and personal thing for me, that everybody in this room has a right to call anybody up and get a hundred percent answer to my. So relying on, you know, asking someone else, I mean, we're having an issue. And we're, we'd be glad to work with you. And I thank everybody for being here, and thank you being part of the, uh, village thing.
Thank you, trustee Pash. License for franchise, can I check the rule?
No, ma'am. Well, the way the franchise will be, uh, people also visiting, like, already have been completed, and it's very generally administrative, great, the office staff, forgetting this stuff. But we've got that, and, uh, as far as, uh, resorting to our grand tree businesses, what has been considered the town is only four, that have not been viewed as of today. And, uh, one is the big sack time, I speak, uh, Jeff goes around, ring his bell, and, uh, like the old nature of the designs, and green home exteriors. And the beautiful is the other one, but we got, got four of them that had gone, and we'll have that on the phone, we're worried, I saw, not forty. But luckily, we are eating toll, but we, we, uh, we've got, we've got all wrapped up from here. Uh, we have no new business, but I would report that the, uh, the old, the old record used to be, uh, it's called Ella's Slots now, is in there today, and they're going to open on Saturday. And I have a dream, and, uh, be here only, and, uh, we got six machines in there in the back, but they really done a nice job inside. Even little pink word in front, people, but they did a nice job, uh, on the inside, and they'll finish the rest on the left, and it's going with them. But we're going to hold up this time today. And we've been following the department.
Very good. And trustee Moon. Building and zoning committee, trustee.
Month is seven. Probably is all, so month. We had nine thirty to do. So it's starting off of eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty, the values for total permit, but of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. For the, uh, the year ending December of, uh, twenty twenty-two, we had three hundred and twenty-one purpose issues. Front of the battery on that thirteen million, one hundred and ten hundred, four seventy-two dollars, maybe seven, resulting in permanent fee of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven. The other people said it's kind of competing, really, whatever. The law is, uh, the, 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 I think, maybe more, I don't know, usually from, I think, you know, for that, at least. There, here. Looking at the ball. Pretty about here. We all live here. We have that position in town, like, it's all, we do, we do, we do. We want to say, if we've been involved with this for a while, and understand, we both are. Anyone who has a question about, um, Bill. Like to talk about it. We, we all understand that we can spend more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee. Okay, so we'll move to action. There's only one thing. Um, it's consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-three, that program for one, it's granting variances to perfect construction, appointing townhomes to a property located at one. Willow Boulevard. So this is a townhome development. It's at the vacant property at the corner here of our general range row, favor of seven variances. Um, this overall project, which is a, that, here in Village Center, it's in the bathroom. Planning and zoning commission conducted, actually, they heard this twice, but they are at first on the level seven, continuing to do some more due diligence and fact finding, and they have a, a meeting, I think, or. Both of these are represented in front of the zone, and probably give a lot of more than other public. And then, uh, which can be sent there, and he's on the board now, is the, after the tour, I think, there is. If there are motions, this ordinance, um, will.
Second.
By trustee Pash, second by trustee, and, and in Scott.
Yes, I'd like to, um, say a few words. Uh, I had the opportunity to examine the zone, which means vocal, remember back to years ago, when, uh, when the people like the president, but I also had some concerns, and, and I think a few things got ironed out. And the things that got ironed out are not necessarily requiring a variance, but something that people need to do.